To order this Tuesday study session of the Pierce County Council. It is Tuesday, September 26, 2023. The time is 12:05 PM. All members are present. Item number two is review of today's council meeting agenda. Ms. Long?
Thank you and good afternoon. This is this afternoon's regular council meeting agenda. I did go over the consenting agenda yesterday, but I do want to highlight one thing that has been added, and you'll see that on page three of your agenda. And this is just an amendment to the committee of the whole agenda that is scheduled for October 5th, so it'll be amending the meeting schedule for that week. Really just consolidates two presentations rather than having two separate sheriff and corrections presentations, they'll be consolidated into one. So that's what that does. You'll see that on there. Other than that, there are no other changes to the consent, so I'll move on unless you have questions. There's one proclamation under section seven today, and that is proclaiming the week of October 2nd through the 8th as a week without driving in Pierce County, and that will be read by councilmember kitchen. Moving to section eight ordinances, you have four ordinances this afternoon. First up is 202333, and this is approving an non-exclusive franchise agreement to MOX Networks for a wireline system in Pierce County. This received a due pass recommendation at EIDC on September 12. Next is 202336, and this is adopting new chapter of the code entitled Commission on Equity. This received a due pass at Health and Human Services on September 19. Number three is 202337, and this is the current biennial budget supplemental. And this received a due pass at rules on September 18. And there is one amendment that I'm aware of. Mr. Bokey discussed that during yesterday's study session. And then the last ordinance is 202340, and this is relating to the Pierce Conservation District amending Exhibit A to ordinance 201646 to recognize the city of Edgewood's incorporation into the district. And this received a due pass at Community Development on September 8. Moving to section nine resolutions, you do have a few here, and first is our 2023134. This is, let me just step back. These first three are similar. They're all interlocal agreements between the county and other jurisdictions. So the first is authorizing the executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Pierce County and Pierce Transit. And this is for to provide law enforcement services. This received a due pass at rules on September 8. The second is an interlocal agreement between Pierce County and the city of Furcrest, and this is for the provision of law enforcement chief services. This also received a due pass at rules on September 18. And the third ILA is between Pierce County and the city of Tacoma. And this one is for the provision of services and jail facilities. This also received a due pass at rules on September 18. And then the last resolution you have is our 2023138S. This is requesting the executive to work with the cities of Tacoma and Puyallup in South Sound 911 and Pierce County's public safety agencies to create a single unified radio system and agreed upon governance plan. This was forwarded as substituted without recommendation at Public Safety yesterday. And those are your agenda items for this afternoon's regular meeting.
Well, thank you. Are there questions about the agenda for today? There's the one amendment on the supplemental budget that we discussed in study session yesterday. Ms. Long, are there other amendments to come before council?
I am not aware of any.
Thank you. Do any other members have any amendments to any of the bills on our agenda today that they want to discuss? Customer Merrill?
No amendments that I want to discuss. I'm just going through 138S to make sure that all the words as match. So I just was given a copy 10 minutes ago, so maybe more to come, maybe not. So just putting Mr. Bridges on notice. Thank you.
Thank you. Fisher Campbell?
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you well.
So we have the force today, and maybe you discussed that study session yesterday, and I wasn't there. And I apologize. Something we've been getting a lot of email on, which the one, what is it, 123? The Equity Commission. And the emails I've been getting are not in align with what I understood the bill to be. Could we get a different quick kind of refresher or have a quick discussion on what it is and isn't? So that we understand because what I'm being, the questions I'm getting from constituents don't match up, and so I want to make sure that I am voting on what I thought I was voting on.
Thank you, customer Campbell. Well, Mr. Bridges is coming back into the chambers. He thought he was off the hook. Mr. Bridges will invite you to the podium. As always, good to make sure we're all on the same page about the bills we are considering. So I appreciate the question at this time. Certainly, there'll be another staff report this evening where there will be more members of the public tuning in. But Mr. Bridges, are you prepared to go over the staff report again on the Commission on Equity?
Well, yes, I can certainly answer questions too. So it, the resolution, or the ordinance would create an equity commission. 11 members, seven would be chosen by the council. The others would be chosen by the executive. That would be the tribal member. And then there are two youth, young adult members. The duties are sort of spelled out in the ordinance. Mostly, they will be relying on guidance from the council, from previous resolutions passed by the council. And those resolutions created predecessor organizations that examined equity and required the executive to come up with reports particularly concerning criminal justice data. There are stipends involved. If there are questions about stipends, the stipend language is based on state statutory language, which created stipends of $200 a meeting for low income people. Low income is defined as 400% of the federal poverty level.
Mr. Bridges, maybe if I could just ask a couple of questions, clarifying questions from, what I've heard is that this is new, that we're starting something new. And as I understand it, we've been doing this for actually a significantly long time in various. So it's, while I understand it's a little different, it's more codifying it, it's not a new program that we're creating, correct?
No, Councilmember Campbell. So this is one of the reasons why the ordinance codifies the legislative history of this process. And you're absolutely right. The process has been going on for two and a half years. Originally created by the council in a predecessor committee to examine criminal justice data that the council requested the executive review. And the executive did so. We created his own work group, presented a report to the council and to the predecessor committee, Public Review Committee, I believe it was called. And a number of reports were created. So in that sense, this is not new. What is new is this is now going to be a permanent equity commission. The other ones were all temporary.
Okay. And it's also, I think I've read on several emails and from one voicemail that this will be stacked with activists. But the seven appointees come from each of the individual council members, correct?
That is correct.
And then the other appointees come from the executive's office.
Yes.
To be approved by us, but they come from the executive's office. So I get, we could disassert, we could kind of draw down from there, given political parties. I know you, Mr. Bridges, you really can't weigh into this, but that the majority of appointments would be originating from someone from the Republican side, not the Democratic side. Mr. Bridges, you don't need to weigh into that. But so that's just not connecting with what I'm hearing back from people. Maybe a question, Chair, if I may, to Councilmember Herrera. Is this the committee that you served on before we appointed you to council?
Mr. Herrera? It sure is. I was involved from the beginning to the end.
So you could give us a great insight into what this committee does and does not do. Would you be willing to help educate us fellow councilmembers a little bit on what you were tasked with and not tasked with?
It's a very long process. It was a very long process, and the way it digested out to start off with the Law and Justice Review Committee, I believe, or the Public Review Committee. And with that came some, just like Mr. Bridges was saying, some, looking at some of the criminal stats and coming up with that. And coming out of that Public Review Committee, we came up with a couple of proposals, and one of them was to have a DIE policies come in place. And the other one was to do a deeper dive in, I think, some criminal statistics with that. And from the Public Review Committee came the Equity Review Committee, which a lot of the people who were on that first committee moved over to that second committee with a couple, couple more. I think we added some tribal people and things like that. Coming out of that, we came up, I mean, it was a very tough committee. And we went through a lot of things, and we came up with some policies which we have now in here. And we're here where we're at, and I think we've come a long way, and we're here, so.
Thank you for that.
Sounds like, I was gonna say thank you for that, and it sounds like you guys did really good work. Appreciate your serving on there and helping us to understand a little bit more of where it came from to get to where we're at. You know, I think sometimes it's incumbent on us as leaders to make sure that we're looking at the good work that we're doing and making sure that people understand what things are and are not. Chair, thank you very much for the time today.
Thanks for the questions. Fisher Campbell, customer Merrill?
Thank you. There again, I think that, you know, this has been kind of an evolution of the process. The conversations at times have been difficult and that this committee has had and challenging because of a lot of the subject matter that has been covered with this. But this, and this is directed to you, Mr. Bridges. This is the only committee that the council has put together that has this stipend. Is there any other committees other than the Planning Commission, which is fee generated? That's something totally different, but that this council has where they get a stipend?
So the stipend was first introduced as a pilot for the Equity Review Committee. Now, $75 a meeting. I think the total cost to the council turned out to be less than $4,000 because not all the people, not all the eligible members claimed. And they were all eligible. There was no income eligibility criteria attached to that. But you are correct in the sense that this would be the non sort of quasi adjudicative body that would have stipends in terms of being a board or commission.
Okay. And there again, if the council deemed it equitable, that all of our committees could have this stipend?
That would be up to the council.
It would be up to the council, correct? Okay. The other question that I had, and it just went in one ear and out the other, which happens to me quite a bit. Thinking. I'll come back to it. Sorry. Lost it. It's gone. Thank you, Mr. Herr.
Cute. Are there other questions about the Equity Review Commission? Customer Cooper?
Thank you, Chair. I've had some questions, but I brought them in here with me. I think a lot of the angst is what is what is described as the mission or the desire and results of this commission, this new commission and being codified differs in what we see happening across the country. The reports of where these types of commissions are employed and the results. So there's a lot of pros and cons that I don't believe were vetted or looked at during this journey of an equity commission. And that's, to respond to Councilmember Campbell's wonder, what people are writing in. I haven't had time to read them all. I was listening last night to a lot of other equity commissions in the country, different counties or states to see what, what they were discussing. And I could not validate creating a commission for the things that I was listening to and the cures they were trying to make. So much of this is subjective and in determining things. See if I can, you called on me a little bit quicker than I anticipated. But I just have to ask them later today, because a lot of, there was not a lot of definitions, see if I can, that were in the ordinance itself. So when the purpose of the commission is going to be engaging with the community and, you know, understanding what I heard when I was looking across the country, they had listening sessions. And there were very few people that were connected into that, and I think people are concerned with that in that there would be actually not that much interaction with people. And I would actually just be better off when I typed out questions for later. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Just wanted to also make sure we're, I just want to add something. The question has been raised about payment per diem for equity commissioners. I appreciate the question being asked. We've noted the Planning Commission is allowed a per diem per meeting. The previous Equity Review Committee, we've allowed a per diem per meeting. We heard how that was utilized. Also, the Board of Equalization. The Pierce County Board of Equalization also is allowed a per diem in our code and statute, I believe. So wanted to make sure we understood that, but I want to maybe more directly address why there's a per diem for this commission and take that head on. I think it's really important that we do so. First of all, it's in the ordinance, it's for those that are income eligible, and we're taking advantage of new state law that defines this. Where the state also is allowing per diem for income eligible individuals. It is just simply a fact that many individuals choose not to participate in boards and commissions because they simply cannot afford to take the time away from childcare. They can't afford the childcare when they would need to be somewhere else, whether it be focusing on a Zoom meeting and fully participating or physically somewhere else. Or having to, how to just juggle the many responsibilities of home life and civic life. And if we want more voices to participate in our democracy, we need to accommodate for that. And sometimes that means providing a modest per diem, like what is being proposed in the bill, to allow for that accommodation. Perhaps that per diem will be paid, will pay for an Uber eats meal to get home to the teenagers while dad can participate in the meeting or the caregiver or the childcare. We got to get more serious about providing accommodation for more people to more fully participate. And this is one small, direct way we can do that. And that is why the per diem for income eligible individuals is in the bill. And I'm proud that we've placed it in the bill to demonstrate that leadership and that opportunity for more people to be able to participate in in at least this this commission, so that we can walk our talk about what it means to get more folks from more walks of life, regardless of their wealth and access to power and their, the time on their hands to be able to do that. So I wanted to respond directly as to why the income eligible per diem is in the bill. And it looks like I'm causing conversation, which is good. Customer Recruiter?
Thank you, Chair. I just have to say it's very nice and altruistic to feel that way. However, having a family is a sacrifice that we make for our children, and you understand you cannot participate in everything because you have children. And so you align yourself with someone else, perhaps, who can run for it, and you communicate through that way. But I don't think it's the role of the taxpayer to accommodate everyone so that they have opportunities to attend whatever organizational things that they so desire. It would be the same as I need to take my kids to soccer practice, but my other one has a piano lesson. So I need somebody to Uber my kid over to a piano lesson while I go to soccer or vice versa. And so that's life. And for us to ask taxpayers to pay other people to participate in this when they can at another time, I chose until my children are older to get more involved because of that. That was a choice that in an understanding of life that we all do. So I don't, I think that's kind of a red herring, like they say.
Appreciate that perspective, and any members can bring forward an amendment to the bill that is before us for final consideration today. Customer Merrill?
Thank you, Ms. Sharon. Since we're, you know, discussing this topic, I, and along with a lot of other council members, listened in to a lot of these meetings that took place, and Councilmember Herrera can chime in at any time. In exit interviews of my two picks for this committee, the concern that they had, and this was coming from someone who was well versed in interaction plus a a African American appointee that I had that sat on this committee was descending voices were not well taken on this committee. The ability to dialogue in a meaningful way seemed to be undercut by a couple of very vocal members. And my concern moving forward is that everyone gets to be heard. Everyone gets to have their opinions voiced without fear of retaliation. And that is one of the issues that they told me, and they would never volunteer for this type of committee again. Just because of how they felt at the end. So how can we ensure that if District 3 appoints some folks, I appoint some folks, whoever appoints, that this is a meaningful conversation with all ideas brought to the table and no one feels like they, if they say something, they may get a lot of pushback. So how is this committee going to be run? Who is, because in the past, we had, you know, a retired judge handle a lot of the supervising or guiding of this conversation. How is it going to be run now? I mean, are they going to appoint their own chair, their own vice chair? Who is, how is the makeup of the committee as far as supervision and oversight going to be?
So the ordinance provides that the group itself appoints the chair and vice chair.
Could you speak up a little bit more?
The chair and vice chair are appointed by the committee, their commission members. And they are to follow as so far as they can, given the informality of commissions and boards, Robert's rules, the same rules that the council follows.
And what kind of support?
In the fiscal note, the executive is providing two FTEs to support the commission.
Okay, and that cost is within the?
It's in the fiscal note, yes. In fact, it's actually the bulk of the fiscal note. It's not the stipends. It's the two FTEs that will be assigned to the commission.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Herr.
Thank you. Customer Herrera?
Chair, you asked some of the questions, so I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Fisher Campbell?
Thank you, Chair. I think some of it got answered there, that the executive, I would, Councilmember Morales, cure you on some of your comments. I would also encourage the executive's office and that the committee themselves to, when they forward any information to the full council, that they include not only the opinion of the committee, but a minority report along with it, given that's a full context of the discussion. That is something they can absolutely set up in their own rules as they get going. And I would, since the executive's office is the one that has the oversight and relationship with the commission that we set up, that they implement that policy of bringing that forward. I was also going to suggest, and I heard you, Councilmember Hoover said that you typed up some questions. Okay, well, then maybe you have a chance. I was going to suggest that you get them to staff ahead of time, but perhaps you're ready for them now. Chair, I thank you.
Thank you. One last question, Mr. Bridges. To make sure we're all reading the bill the same way, this is a recommending commission. I'm, like the rest of us, my box is full of a lot of, I couldn't ask you to comment on what's in my inbox. But there's a lot in my inbox about a lot of fear, a lot of the Equity Commission is going to destroy life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness and life as we know it. And this commission is going to have all power to make all decisions by an unelected body, and I see that a lot in my inbox. Not asking you to comment on what's in my inbox, but this notion that this commission is doing anything but making recommendations to professional staff of various departments. Different concepts might come to the commission to brainstorm with them and get advice and counsel or make recommendations to electeds like the council or other independently electeds. The question is, this is a recommending body, a body that is set up to make recommendations to department staff and to various elected officials in county government. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is accurate. In fact, that applies to all boards and commissions. And in fact, a few would sort of allow me to express a legal opinion, to do otherwise would likely be an unlawful delegation of legislative authority. Even if this council by ordinance gave them the authority to pass laws, for example, to pass ordinances, that would unlike, that would likely be unconstitutional. So legally speaking, it must be an advisory body. It could not be otherwise.
Thank you. Couple more lights. Let's move, Cooper?
Thank you, Chair. Just to piggyback on those comments before getting to my questions, which I'll wait until you say that would be permissible in that, yes, they would be an advisory committee, commission. However, we just today adopted the recommendations from the floodplain zone. We adopt recommendations from the planning and land use. We adopt recommendations from the Transportation Advisory Committee. It's not real often that we don't because we are asking them to do something for our knowledge that we are seeking to implement. And so it is very rare that we change things around, at least in my recent memory. They can be tweaked. But when I looked at can be tweaked. But when I looked at the global picture, we got a federal plan for equity, we have a state plan for equity, we have all other towns doing equity. We have departments in colleges and departments in businesses and corporations, and we have an endless number of nonprofit organizations that have everything on about equity that is changing the dynamics of how we operate, how we think and how we do things based on an interpretation that the way I'm seeing it is there is this racism thing everywhere. And I took the class on racism that the county has. And personally, I was quite offended. And so this isn't particularly all inclusive. So we're changing restructuring the dynamics of the founding documents or the founding idealism going from the individual to looking at groups. We reiterate the EEOC thing where we do not discriminate particularly against and we name groups. Well, if you're not in that group, you don't get attention yet. The code, the law says we do not discriminate. Everyone is created equal and that's under law. We live our lives differently. This commission is put on a mission to look for problems. They may or may not be real. That's it's all subjective. And you're putting it into a position where there is, you know, a sense of authority that is in this commission. So with that, I will say there is a lot being recommended from a committee that is appointed in as far as an influence. When I was researching, one of the equity commissions had someone from the ACLU on it. They had somebody from one of the unions on it and someone from another nonprofit organization. So they can have different types of influence on them as well on what they do. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Again, I want to remind all members, every member can bring an amendment forward if they're concerned about something and want to clarify something or comes from real.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate that. Again, the opportunity to speak again when I kind of come up with an idea. As I said before, a lot of these discussions are difficult at times and you know, we're, we're, yes, you know, we we talk about equity. But you know, there again, we talk about inclusion too, is making sure that, you know, we can talk about our ideas, our opinions and and everything counts. I appreciate with Councilmember Campbell said pertaining to addressing the issue about making sure everyone's heard through whatever reporting the exec decides to to do. And I think, you know, that's important is is we discuss subjects. The subject of equity. You know, equity in my district may be a little bit different than equity in District Number Four. As far as an urban district goes versus a rural suburban district, and we have to understand that there are differences and our opinions are what our constituents will likely support. So that being said, with the two, starting from the Justice Review Commission to the First Equity Commission, what are some of the, and you may be able to go back between now and and tell us what are what are some of the recommendations that have come forward and that we have made policy out of? You don't have to answer that now, but I would like to have you know, that to make sure that, okay, we we got recommendations and not all recommendations become policy. But there are some that have become policy and this council has has you know, brought those forward. So I would like some of that.
So I can answer the question now. Because it's a fairly simple question to answer. Public Review Committee essentially recommended that the executive continue with the criminal justice data review. And what the council did is we hired in the last budget, two data analysts to help the executive with that effort. That committee also sort of didn't fully recommend an equity note process. But it recommended something like that. And so the council eventually with Councilmember Campbell's leadership on this ended up passing the equity note process. There's only one recommendation that was, oh, the other recommendation was to continue somehow the work of the Public Review Committee. Well, that recommendation ended up being the creation of the Equity Review Committee itself. As a continuation of the Public Review Committee. The Equity Review Committee only had one recommendation. There was a lot of discussion, but one recommendation that was formally voted on. And that recommendation was the creation of a permanent committee. And that is what this ordinance, this proposed ordinance will do.
So I guess what I'm, what I wanted to just vet out is, wow, Councilmember. Anyway, sorry. The light show on. Councilmember Campbell just.
That was.
I guess what I'm, I'm just trying to get out is there hasn't been any real recommendations that have been totally off the charts of this committee as far as how we conduct business in in the county. And so, you know, out of all that, and I understand the recommendation that there's more work to do because there's always more work to do. But there hasn't been out of this committee really. How should, how should I say? The recommendations have been reasonable. So they haven't been you know, off the charts as far as what they're asking for to this point. Is that true?
Well, so I'll leave it up to the council to decide what is off the charts. That's that's sort of your purview, not mine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you. Try the background here. Maybe it's working, maybe it'll fade out again. This equity committee is is a lot of work in the next steps. And forgive me, I'm going to take this up to a higher level here for a little bit. In that the founding documents were mentioned. So we go back to the time of the founding of this nation, when we've always sought to form a more perfect union. To form a governance structure, top to bottom, that works better for the people, but for well, I want to say for all people. But when we started, we didn't start that way. The Constitution wasn't rooted in equality. And that's why we have amendments to the Constitution to allow certain people to write to vote that were not given to them when they began. Was James Madison, our fourth president of the United States, that offered up the three fifths compromise. That said in our constitution, certain people just are not equal. Now, since then, we have through the years worked to identify those issues. Address them. And as a nation, say, you know what? We can do better. You know what? As a county, we can always do better. And if we have someone, any of our boards and commissions bringing forward thoughts and ideas as to how out there we're not doing better and we can do better. Why do we not want that information? We're not compelled to accept it. We're not compelled to pass anything. We're not even compelled to listen to it. But I would say it would make us far better leaders in our community. The more voices we listen to coming from the more different places. And this can be our planning commission, this can be our birth to 25, this can be all the boards and commissions. Councilmember morale has been very strong in urging us to respect the voice that comes forward from our boards and commissions. But we need to make sure that we are getting the full picture. By having a wide breadth of commissions and boards that are providing information from us by which we can make our best decisions for every resident in this county. And for us to say, we don't want to hear from some people. We don't think these people in a room will provide us with good information and we don't trust ourselves to filter that. We've got deeper systemic problems then. So I am happy that we're bringing this forward. I think it makes us a better county. And I think it makes us better leaders for it. Forgive me for soapboxing. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, customer Campbell. Customer recruiter, then I'm going to urge us to continue on with the rest of our agenda. Customer recruiter.
Thank you, Chair. That that's very, very nice information, Councilmember Campbell. I'm not going to go back over the history, but just before people even came to this country, there there was a cry for equality and equity and fairness because there was a lot of torture going on. And they came here to get rid of a king. But did I want me to address some of my questions? If I could, I I'm just trying to understand, I think, a lot of the issues that there is such a lack of understanding of the real meaning and intent on this legislation that I, you know, when you say about an amendment, I mean, I'm I'm would ask for postponement to have outreach. If there are these many people that are confused about what the intent is of this, maybe we need to do a better outreach, which is what the purpose is supposed to be for this. And apparently, we better do that before we pass something to know what's going to be in it. Because I believe a lot of the policies that will be coming forth from this have not been determined. But yet, when you look at what is going on in other equity commissions, there are lots of toolkits out there that are driving the information that will be in these that will be passing for policy.
Thank you, customer recruiter. We will not be delaying the vote today. We'll be we'll be voting on it today.
Expected, but I thought I would ask.
Thank you. You're free to make a motion at the three o'clock meeting, but my intention is to move the work along. Thank you. I don't see any other hands about today's council meeting agenda. Thank you, Mr. Bridges, for answering those questions. And thank you, members, for the dialogue. That brings us to item three, external boards and commissions. May I turn to Mr. Taylor or Mr. Swanson? To begin the update on external boards and commissions.
Sorry, Mr. Chair was stuffing my face. We thought we had more time there. Yes, this week coming up with the Pierce County Regional Council. There, there are a couple of committees, none of them interfere with, none of them that council members have are scheduled to attend interfere with any of the, any of our our budget work being done later this week. The the executive board does have a 10 a.m. meeting. I will check in with you, Chair Mello, to make sure you you are. I'm assuming you're doing that meeting virtually. I want to make sure you're able to get a because we do have the afternoon meeting there that shouldn't necessarily conflict with that. There are several. I mean, the the main, the main thing being on there is the 2024 Legislative Agenda. We're keeping an eye on that. What Pierce County Regional Council puts out for their legislative agenda and making sure we're using that to inform recommendations come forth to this body. There's also the regional safety draft plan, the scope of work for that that's at that meeting. The Washington State Ferry's presentation, which should be interesting, timing wise, informing some our ferry discussions coming up with our fourteen year ferry plan. The Operations Committee also meets this week. We don't have any council members that serve on that, so we won't have any conflicts there. Next week's Growth Management Policy Board with Councilmember Dentson, we will definitely have a conflict and need to work with your office. Once the agenda comes out to to, you know, make sure you know, we can't get our alternates there either, but you know, to to make sure since the council can't be represented in that body, how we will handle that. As as far as the Pierce County, Mr. Chair, I assume you were going to brief the the meeting from last week. Related to the Pierce County Regional Council. I got an update on it, but I didn't. I I haven't been able to listen to the audio, so my my update on it is secondhand.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and that's, yeah, so those two bodies, those are, those are the updates I have. Members have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. I'm not seeing any hands about the Pierce County Regional Council Executive Board agenda. Picking up where you left off, the Pierce County Regional Council did meet. The, there was one item related to urban growth area expansions. That the the Pierce County Regional Council authorized to go out for public comment. So that that's, that was that one auction item, action item, which was authorizing that for for further comment and review, especially by member jurisdictions. The other item related to the criteria for transportation investments. We had a little bit of a discussion, but the item was postponed to next month is the punchline. The item was was basically punted to to next month. In large part because the board packet had only come out like, I think, maybe two or three days before and more members needed more time to meet with their professional staff to understand implications about what was being proposed. So the the suggested changes by the work group was was discussed a little bit. There is some pretty significant disagreement. I will remind council members. The, there, there is disagreement that the work group was divided on a number of items. It was a seven member work group. There were a number of four three votes on this work group. I cast my vote, I I think largely with where our professional staff landed on some of the unintended consequences of some of these. So that there was the a professional, our professional staff was able to weigh in on these changes. And then the the policy group was was able to weigh in. My vote landed oftentimes, if not always, with where the professional group was advising the policymakers. And I believe that's where my vote is going to continue to land at PCRC, because I think there's some pretty big unintended consequences related to the investments. So that's, but more to come. That's coming back in in October. Does any other member have any other updates about external boards and commissions? Customer Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Though we didn't have a Crystal Judson Family Justice Center meeting in the last week or two, we have formally received the resignation of Lois Bernstein, who served us for over a decade on the board. She is actually retiring. I think she's going to be one of those people that kind of fails at retirement, but she's she is stepping down from the Crystal Judson Family Justice Center Board. And so the the spot is a community member. We're really interested, like, we would love to kind of keep that connection with healthcare. But it is community. So I have worked with communications to get an application form. And I'll distribute that to to the six of you so that you have it and also everybody within the domestic violence field and space. But it's, we're going to be going out to fill that spot. And that process is the names come in and then it goes, the the board itself nominates the community member. So it's myself, Councilmember Campbell, and then it's Councilmember Rumba and Councilmember Hines from the City of Tacoma make up the board. And then the fifth person is this community member. Is the makeup of that that board. So we'll be doing that soon. But we need names to review. So I just wanted to give you a heads up why you might be getting an application with a link and a QR code in the next day or two. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that. Any other updates on boards and commissions? Not seeing any. We'll move to chairs topics. And there's just one item that I wanted to bring up under chairs topics today. And that is our blackout period that we've imposed upon ourselves and and any of the executive and other branches of government who might be trying to transmit bills for council consideration. I believe it was last month or maybe the month before I did transmit a letter to the council. Excuse me, I transmitted a letter to the executive on the council's behalf and asked him to send that to his department heads and also the other independently electeds and letting them know that we have what we call a blackout, a legislative blackout period, which started from the moment the executive transmitted his proposed budget to us to the time we adopt our budget, which is currently scheduled for the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. The whole purpose of that is to preserve our limited staff capacity, both council's time, council's brainpower, time, committee time, and council staff time to to work on the council's budget development. It takes an enormous amount of staff energy to understand what's in the proposal, to work on all of the committees of the whole, all of the budget development that's going to come from all seven of us and our final budget. It takes an immense amount of energy. And if, you know, a bill of any kind might seem simple, but it takes a lot of energy to process any bill around here. A lot of review, a lot of work. What might seem simple to some is controversial to another and causes a lot of questions and follow-up and a lot of time and effort. For that reason, we put a blackout period, not only on the executive and departments, but but ourselves in order to preserve our time. So the exceptions we make are things that have already been in the hopper that were introduced before the start of the blackout period, to think that we're in the hopper before September 18th. Things that are necessary to implement the budget. So if there is a bill that is necessary to implement our budget, we will schedule and hear that bill. If we need to change a code or change something that is of importance to the council that is necessitated to implement our budget, we will schedule that. And of course, if the majority of the council believes that that thing is so important that it must demand the time and energy of ourselves and the council, then of course we can schedule something. But I'm really asking all of us to please help us collectively adhere to our blackout period that we've requested respectfully of the executive. We can get to these non-budget-related bills right after Thanksgiving. But that is the purpose of the blackout period. We have limited staff capacity and really any bill, whether it seems simple or not, anything takes, does take hours, even the most simplest of thing, takes hours of staff time to coordinate and answer questions and drafts, draft staff reports and so on and so forth. It takes a lot of effort to move any piece of legislation forward, no matter how simple it might seem. That is the purpose of the blackout period. I will ask us to please continue to work together so we can preserve the sanity and hard work of our staff especially. Questions about that request? Councilmember Herrera?
So I'm guessing that coming up, because I just dropped something. So are you saying that that's just going to be held off? Or you're going to take a look at it and make the command decision of it being worthy to move forward or not?
Um, not just your bill, Councilmember Herrera. I didn't want to call out just that one bill. There have been a few other things from several members that I've had to ask folks to please hold off on. If it's not deemed necessary to implement our budget. We could, if something really rises to the level of it is an extreme emergency or we deem it really important, let's have conversation. Please bring it to me. Let's have conversation. And we will I can then make a decision if I think it's worthy of taking our staff off of the time that we've asked them to dedicate to developing our budget. So I am very available, I'm very available for conversation. Please bring anything to me and we'll make, we'll make a decision. Thank you. Any other questions about that? Seeing that we're at other business. And we are bringing back the Key Peninsula Trust Land Transfer Letter that Councilmember Dentson brought forward yesterday. And Councilmember Dentson, I know you hustled to work with community members who have brought this forward. And you've did your best in 24 hours to address some questions. Councilmember Dentson, can I call on you to continue this?
I was just looking at some of those answers. Yes, thank you for all of your questions. Just to clarify, I sent this to everyone. I sent you the map. It is the entirety of what's called the 360 Park, which is right next to their Gateway Park. So it's a big park that they are looking to have DNR consider for divesting and transferring to Key Peninsula Parks. They don't have any knowledge of the timber value. They said an appraisal will be a future step if they're accepted into the program. So it's probably one of the I imagine that's one of the things DNR considers, but they don't have that yet. And then Councilmember Herrera brought up a really, really good question about what happens to any existing treaty rights. Because the land is DNR land, that the local tribes that have usual and accustomed areas for this, for this land have the right to exercise treaty rights, hunting and gathering. The Park District didn't really know anything about this, so I don't know if that activity is going on now, but it is, it is a right that our tribes have. So I reached out to them. They've not had time to reach out to the tribes. And this was kind of a last-minute thought that they had to pursue this trust transfer in the deadline soon, but we're encouraging them to do so. And given that, I'm so glad Councilmember Herrera brought it up. I updated the letter and I sent it to you all. And I just added at the end that our support was contingent on them not only consulting with the tribe, but ensuring that the treaty rights would be retained. Whatever is there now would be retained under their new ownership as well. And I'll continue to to work with the Park District and talk to their board and, because I imagine that's something that pretty confident that they will want to retain anyway. And DNR actually may have something within their own guidelines, their own state guidelines, that maybe that happens. I don't know. We've tried to reach out to DNR as well. And just because of the timeline, we haven't been able to reach anybody there yet. So the grant is due, I think, at the end of this week or very early next week. So I would love to move forward and and get the support letter contingent on that one issue signed and forwarded over to them to support them in their efforts. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Councilmember Dentson. Appreciate you raising the issue about gathering rights of tribal individuals to continue their usual and accustomed practices on these kinds of lands. I think adding that as a contingency of our support and an expectation of our support, I think, is very thoughtful and a good way to move forward. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for bringing this forward, because that's the kind of excitement that I like to have in my district too. However, I just, I've got a few other things that I'm trying to get information on before I can support it right now, but since you do have a little bit more time, I'd appreciate the grace on that to, for me to confirm some questions.
I don't, I'm happy to give it till the end of the week. I don't know that we can do that, Chair.
I don't need.
But will there be another opportunity for us to come together on that, to make that decision?
Not on this. This is our last scheduled opportunity. So, Councilmember Cooper, if you want to continue with your your
I may know by the end of the day, kind of thing, and I don't know that you have to have. I mean, if I choose to not support, you would just put the other names, correct?
This, thanks for clarifying. This is proposed, like, most of our letters of support to be on just the signature of the chair to be on behalf of the sense of the council. So it will only be under my signature on behalf of the council, so.
If I don't say no by three, go ahead. Does that work?
Does that work?
That does.
Okay, how we do these? Thank you. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And thank you, everyone, for taking it seriously and asking the good questions. We've got some lightning outside. Hopefully, no one's prepared to go outside here. Thank you, Councilmember Dentson. Mr. Dominique, we are at the proclamation process review. We have the Chief of Staff with our with our administrative team here at the Office of the County Council has been continuing to evaluate our processes to make sure they are working for the council. One of those processes that have been under a review has been our proclamation process, and I'd like to call on Mr. Dominique, our Communications Manager, to help walk us through some of the staff work in this regard. Mr. Dominique?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. Brian Dominique, Communications Manager for the Office of the Pierce County Council. The work of our proclamation review really began when the council adopted or amended its rules of procedure that changed proclamations from a legislative action to a basically just a presentation. So we define proclamations as a ceremonial event presented by the council to recognize and celebrate monumental events, causes, and groups or persons. So no longer do we have legislative action for the, for proclamations. Now they're just a presentation essentially. So what we did is we had to develop a new process and how we were going to to manage that. And I want to, I want to pause right here and share some information about the about proclamations. It can feel like proclamations don't carry the same amount of weight when they're not legislative. But I want to say that has not been the case with these changes. Just this month, we did the Suicide Prevention Month Proclamation for September, and that generated a lot of attention within the community. We had an article in the News Tribune, an article in Geek Harbor Now. One of the guests was from Geek Harbor that came to the proclamation. Generated a lot of feedback on social media, so proclamations are still an important part of council business. But there is some work that goes into it on the staff side, and that's what I'm here to share with you today. So a proclamation from inception to presentation takes three weeks. And it takes three weeks because as your communications manager, I'll intake the proclamation and then the clerks will draft the proclamation with your office. And then I'll work with you and your, whoever you're inviting, on organizing what the presentation is going to look like. So from from inception, we draft it, it goes to pre-rules, then goes to rules for scheduling. And then you have one week as councilmembers to review, decide whether you're going to sign on it or not, and then it goes before council. Now, there is, there are exceptions that can be made to that three-week rule. You know, if something comes up that's an emergent issue, we can get a proclamation together faster than that. We do encourage that the council abide by that three-week rule because it makes for less mistakes, essentially. And then when it comes to, when it comes to this, when it comes to what we dub the show or the presentation, we put together a, this right here, this memorandum for planning a proclamation recognition. It kind of goes through what to expect the day of. So your guests will come in, the chair will invite them to the podium. The proclamation will be read by the council member that's bringing this proclamation forward. Guests will have five to seven minutes to speak on that. If you're going to do something special, like some kind of presentation that could take longer than five to seven minutes, just let myself and the chair know so we can plan accordingly for that. So it's not necessarily that you're limited to that five to seven minutes, but that's the standard. And then councilmembers will have an option to speak on the proclamation, will take a photo, and that will be that. And then the clerks will print out 10 copies. If we need more than 10 copies, just let me know and I can make sure that happens. And then at a bare minimum, a proclamation, the photo will be posted on social media. And then we usually put it in the county legislator, which is our newsletter. Unless there's like a lot of legislative things happening at that time, then we'll push that back. But at a minimum, it goes out on social media. And if I can go to the next slide, I have an agenda in here that walks through the steps. Yes, right there. So this is the three-week process that we go through, and I won't go through the entire agenda, but I just wanted, I just wanted to have this calendar up here to show all the different things that are happening when a proclamation is requested. So there's, there's a lot of things on the backend that are happening when a proclamation, when you request a proclamation. And I just, I have this here to illustrate those different steps that are happening, and I'm happy to talk more to the calendar if you, if you would like. But I just, I just wanted to have this here because it's not as simple as just writing a proclamation and then bringing it before council. There are some processes we have to go through. So that's why we have the three weeks. And I think that's pretty much all I have. On the end of this, we have the proclamation schedule for the rest of 2023 that we showed the rules and operations yesterday. Like I said, to the Rules and Operations Committee, we're not bound to this list. These are just things we'll be working on. If you have a proclamation that comes forward from a community member, you're more than welcome to request that that proclamation be created and the staff will be able to work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Dominique. Like I tried to illustrate before, in the reason for the blackout period, this too helps illustrate, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that sometimes maybe members can take for granted about how simple something might be or how quick something should be to get that. There's a lot of steps involved when, when we, when any of us touch something. So thank you for showing the homework and what all goes into proclamation development so that it is thoughtful and respectful of what we're trying to trying to recognize as a body. Questions or comments about what we heard about this process? Councilmember Hitchen?
Thank you, Chair. I asked this question in rules yesterday, so I'll start with that one. I'm going to use this as an example because it's, it's, I want to do this. If I also wanted to support here on this documentation, human traffic, not support human trafficking, that came out wrong. I want to support the proclamation around human trafficking awareness. What would be the best way to do that as far as your communication, since this is going to guide your, your team, the chair, the staff here as far as who's involved? Is there a way that you want that done or do you think about that process?
Yeah, so, so I'll start with 2024. So in 2024, I'm going to come before rules and operations with a recommended list of the proclamations that the council should consider. Once rules and operations says, hey, that list looks good to us, let's roll with it. I'll send that list out to all the councilmembers and say, hey, here's our annual proclamations list. Do you want to sponsor any of these? And then you or your assistant will respond to that, either coming up to me and speaking with me or by email saying like, hey, we want to do this proclamation, and then I will add your name as a sponsor. There's no limit on the number of people that can want to, that want to bring a proclamation forward. We can have one member or seven members. If there's a proclamation that is on the annual list, that the, that no member is, wants to take up, that automatically goes to the chair, and then we work with the chair on scheduling and stuff like that. So the chair of the council would be the one that brings that forward. Does that answer your question?
It does. I'll just Councilmember Herrera, I would like to help and be prepared for the human trafficking awareness. My second question is just around, it says staff will print 10 copies. We traditionally don't. I'm just curious, why 10? Is there, is it an emergency? It says in the last bullet is staff will print 10 copies of any proclamation, and I'm just, I don't know, saving trees?
We could limit that number. Well, I did get some feedback that 10 may be a lot. We are trying to avoid running into the need of having to print last minute. Because sometimes like we'll expect three people to come, but then they'll invite their guests and then we'll have more people. And so we want to be able to present everyone with a proclamation.
Okay. Maybe half, like five? I'm trying to think if there's been, I mean, there's been a couple, obviously, like Daffodil. And I don't know that we've been giving them, but I know like when I've done any proclamations, I've kind of counted up how many guests and made sure that I communicated that, just to try and save that. There's been some snafus, but, okay. 10 seems like a lot. I'll just leave it at that and we can figure it out. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other feedback about the process? Well, again, thank you for showing us the many steps, all the coordination that goes in to, again, being respectful about, with our guests and what we're trying to achieve. If there's a lot going on, so if we aren't following the steps that you all need to to do the work, please just tell us. It's probably not that we're being defiant. It's, it's that we can't remember the, the process that is put in place to make all the magic happen. So please feel free to manage up and remind us about any, any, any number of the things. manage up and remind us about any, any, any number of, of the things, because we, we do want to make sure our staff has the capacity to do their work. Not everything should be a fire drill. Not, I think, everything can be a fire drill. So just remind us if there's, if, if we're slipping up on something, please, please just tell us, and we'll, we'll, we'll do our best to ourselves to train us, to train ourselves into what, what the process needs to be.
Yes, sir. I'll do that, and I'll communicate that to, to our team as well.
Thank you. There's one proclamation for review in the packet. October 3rd, for the October 3rd meeting, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. You can see that's being brought forward by Councilmember Hitchen and encourage you to get with her if, if you have any requested changes. Is there any other business by members today? Any other business in study session? Ms. Long, any other business for council?
Today, thank you.
So you know the business before the Pierce County Council Tuesday session, we are adjourned.